I'd like to bring the meeting of the Pittsburgh City Commission to order. Please join me in a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start the meeting with public input. Do we have anyone who'd like to come before the city? Yes, sir.
Mayor Commissioners, Jeff Wilbert, live at 611 North Catalpa. Just wanted to take a minute to thank you for the opportunity to come before you and announce that our annual Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Drive is this Saturday. It will be located at both Walmart stores, Dylan's, and Ron's IGA. So if you grocery shop this weekend, you're going to run into us. As many of you are aware, in June of 1962, Eunice Kennedy Shriver held a summer day camp for young people with intellectual disabilities in her backyard. She was so inspired to do something for this group of children after seeing limited opportunities for them to participate in athletic events. The Special Olympics became a reality because of her efforts. John F. Kennedy and Sergeant Shriver, both members of the Knights of Columbus, became the Knights Association with the Special Olympics. Since 1962, the Knights of Columbus have raised over $600 million to support programs for people with intellectual and physical disabilities, with the Special Olympics among the largest benefactor. Of the money that we will raise on Saturday, 80% will come back to our council, and we will distribute it to local organizations that support those with intellectual challenges. The remaining 20% will be directed by the Kansas Knights of Columbus towards Special Olympics throughout the state. We want to thank the citizens of Pittsburgh for their generosity, and especially to Walmart, Dylan's, and Ron's for allowing us to collect at their locations. So we just wanted the community to be aware of that, and I just happen to have a treat for each of you. So Mayor, if I can approach and give you what we're going to be passing out this Saturday.
Thank you.
And we're not collecting on these.
Shall we consider this a bribe?
Consider whatever you win.
Thank you, Jeff.
Got one for everybody.
Okay, while Jeff's handing out the Tootsie Rolls, anyone else for public input? Seeing none, I close public input. Consent agenda. Anything anyone wants to take off?
No.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. A roll call vote.
Chinewin?
Aye.
McNally?
Aye.
Munso?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick, before we get started with the rest of the meeting, I'd like to make a motion before we spend more taxpayers' money, that we have Evergy come to a commission meeting beyond the agenda of November 12th to provide information that will be needed to make an informed decision regarding possibility of creation of electric utilities. So I'll make that motion, that they be allowed, they've requested to be on the agenda, so I'll make a motion they be allowed to be put on the agenda for November 12th. Hearing no second, the motion died.
Can we just, I would just like to say, there will be a time for Evergy to come. I just think it's premature. We don't have all of our data. So, you know, I think there'll be a time.
Well, I understand that, but they've been told for two years, when we've been talking about it, they will be able to come and talk about their side of it. So I understand there'll be a time when we decide that they can come, so.
Is that, is public input a place where they could come?
Sure.
Start coming public input.
Anybody can come on our public input.
Which they've been informed of. Moving on to special presentations, new business announcement. Al Patel and Raj Patel will present, will be present to announce plans to bring a new business to Pittsburgh.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. I was going to open with a bad joke about there being blizzards forecast here in Pittsburgh. These kinds of announcements are obviously a lot of fun to make, and we're proud to do this, although this is something that has been rumored about in Pittsburgh for quite a while, and we're glad to confirm it tonight. Very proud to have with us Al Patel and Raj Patel. They are already current Pittsburgh business owners. They own Pitt Discount Liquor on South Broadway and have for about the last three years.
Yes.
That's right. And they want to add a new business to our community, and I'll let them make that announcement.
Wow, thank you, sir.
We'll get a visual aid for folks at home to see.
I really thanks to really giving us the opportunity to introduce ourselves to being a Pittsburgh city. Like, I came about four years ago to look for the Dairy Queen land, and finally we found the liquor store at that time. Happy part is the liquor store, and still looking for the DQ land, and finally we find one good location where Dairy Queen approved, and we're going to go ahead and get it started next year. I was going to start building this year, but coming up as, they are coming up with new model, that the DQ is changing a new style of the Dairy Queen. So I just canceled the program for this year, and we are building next year. So I really appreciate it to give us, giving us a chance for it.
So I think we have another slide here, Raj, that gives some of those details.
The construction will definitely be starting as soon as they announce the Dairy Queen to as a new model, because I, until they officially doesn't announce, we can't do nothing. And it will be the first or the second brand-new Dairy Queen, like a different new model Dairy Queen in the United States. I think it's going to be as a, the one going to be, first one is going to be a corporate owned by the Dairy Queen, Mr. Juan Buffett, probably, and the second one is going to be ours in Pittsburgh. And it will take about, depends on the weather, about probably 120 days to finish, and really, Larry Snyder, if anybody heard about that company, he's from Pittsburgh, but he is in Branson, and they're the one doing the construction here.
Did you bring samples?
That's what I missed because of.
You got Tootsie Rolls. We didn't get a blizzard.
I think I was worried about getting melted.
So Al, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, he already said, yeah, we can't go into detail.
Yeah.
Well, we appreciate you investing in Pittsburgh again, and look forward to your opening.
Thank you. At that time, I'll have it, so.
We'll hold you to it.
And I think it is important to point out that, as it's on the screen, it's a $2.2 million investment in our communities. That's no small change, so obviously appreciate these gentlemen investing in our community.
Thank you. I'm going to move the special presentations down to item E, next. It's Child Response Advocates Program. Deputy Police Chief Tim Tompkins will present information on the Pittsburgh Police Department's Child Response Advocates Program.
Mayor Commissioners, it's not often we get to come before you and brag, but that's what we're going to do tonight. This is going to be a very brief presentation. We just kind of want to highlight again this program. It's been around for six years now, and it's unfortunate that we have to have it, but as a community, we're so very fortunate to have it. So we'll just talk a little bit about the history, what we do with the program, so you get a better understanding, and then I've got some numbers that highlight why we do what we do. So this program started.
Who's your partner? I'm crying.
This is a two-hour presentation that's been seriously scaled down, so I'm rolling.
Good.
Yeah, it's, I'm excited to have Anna Elliott with me, who is the Executive Director of the Family Resource Center, which is one of our cornerstone partnerships in this program. So I apologize. Thanks for correcting me. Now I'm off kilter, but we'll get going. No, so 2012, 2013, we had some really horrific numbers in our community. We had one of the highest rates of out-of-home placement of children between our county and Cherokee County, and that's not something we want to brag about. What we realized is kids were falling through the cracks for a variety of reasons, whether we were busy, resources were lacking, folks didn't know where to go to get those resources, there was a lot of it. But really, what we started focusing on is how to address kids and families in crisis to prevent this from elevating to where the cases required legal intervention. That was kind of what we wanted to tackle. We looked at our community household, our income ranks about 28% below the state averages. Our free and reduced-price lunches hover around the 64 up-down percentage. That equates to kids in crisis and family in crisis. Obviously, there's some holes there. So a group began brainstorming. It started with then-commissioner Monica Mernan, who was on the commission, and along with Ann, they started talking about the fact that seeing that we were pulling kids out of homes on a regular basis, Ann can tell you from the center, the struggles that they see with the families, and so they started it. They recognized that there was some grant funding out there to address this problem, and they approached City Manager Darren Hall, who then grabbed then-police chief Mindy Holby, and together this group started the formation of what the program would become. We brought the Family Resource Center in, not only our agency, but other area law enforcement that was struggling with the same issues we were, the Sheriff's Department, Front Act, Geraldo, ARMA, all our surrounding areas. We also reached out to community advocacy groups and the school systems, you know. We see these kids on a regular basis, we know there's a problem, but we just didn't have the resources to address it. It didn't rise to legal intervention, or the school only had them during the school day. So you have those gaps that needed filled. So what this concept came out to be was we identified a need for filling these gaps with kiddos at risk and their families. We did meetings to identify the scope, where we wanted to go, what kind of resources we had. The primary funding I talked about was a child abuse prevention grant that's put through the Children's Cabinet. It was written by the Family Resource Center staff, ninja grant writer lady by the name of Dawn Miles. Just incredible how she pulled this all together in a very short amount of time. We recognized some in-kind city funds. We agreed to house the position here, provide a car, provide computer equipment, just things to make the program work. But before it ever got off the ground, we realized this was going to be a huge program, and Chief Holby recognized some funding in our current budget. We had some officers deploy through the military, and so they were gone for 18 months, and we had dollars in our budget that were going to go unfunded, so we pushed that to the advocate. We made the pitch to City Manager to expand this program, so it basically grew before it ever got off the ground, which is a good thing. You'll see why here in just a bit. So two main goals. First, fill the gaps. Support kids and families at risk to keep them out of the system, and the second was to train those on the outside to recognize issues. We trained everybody from police officers to firefighters, ambulance technicians, EMTs, paramedics, our own city service workers who might see problems and be able to identify those issues. We trained everybody that we possibly could, and continued to do so. The grant, the reporting and the stats are all managed by the Family Resource Center and Ann and her staff. They do a tremendous job with that. We put some reporting mechanisms in place in the police department to help track the numbers. If you know grants, you understand, if you don't have numbers, you don't have grant funds. It's just that simple. We look at our goals, continually assess our outcomes to keep the program current. If you do the same old thing you've always done, sooner or later, the grant's going to dry up, so we have to stay on the forefront of that. It's obviously fluid and evolving, no matter what we do, but the important thing is getting our foot through the door. And here's where our program differs from everything. Our services are voluntary. Folks can say, "No, I don't want your help." Rarely do they ever do that. We do assessments to define what their needs are, then we continue doing assessments to shape and change whatever services we provide to make sure that family's benefiting. We set limits. Again, you've got to sometimes say no. It's just that simple. We'll help pay your electric bill this month, but you need to go find a job and make sure you have electricity for your kiddos. That's on you. So we help where we can, but we do set those limits. It all starts with assessments. That's where it goes. What does this family need? What do these kiddos need to be successful? Once that's identified, we start matching resources and get those folks enrolled in programs or whatever it is out there. We do follow-up monitoring to change, because the needs of the family dynamic may change, and so we try to change the program to meet that. And then again, primarily, we're looking at short-term processes, trying to avoid getting out-of-home placement going. That's our number-one goal. So what do we do? What's our menu like? Obviously, direct support is the cornerstone to everything that we do, face-to-face, in there with them, day in and day out. We set up in-home-based support if we need to, if it's a long-term situation. We work directly with the families, daily, weekly, monthly, whatever their needs are. That's what we do to meet those needs. We refer them to a lot of support organizations, but here's the key, there are over 50 service organizations designed to support families and kiddos in our community. So if you're somebody struggling, how do you go find 50 resources? That's what the key of the program was, is to bring all those together so that folks don't have to struggle through that. We can help them and get what they need to go. Who can refer to our program? Anybody. Anybody. Our referrals come from law enforcement, they come from school, they come from community resources, churches, outreach programs, DCF, even self-referrals. Our reputation is out there, and it's strong in this community, and teachers and schools will say, "Call the police department, they've got a program that may help you." So we even get those self-referrals. Again, that's what sets us apart, is it's voluntary. And here's the beauty, only six times have we been refused at the door in the six years we've been doing it. That's huge. That's huge. What's our report card? Here's where we get to brag, folks. This is, and I apologize, I know I get wound up on this, but this program is near and dear to a lot of us. The number of families we served in the fall of 2013 when we started, five families and 11 kids. We have two advocates today. Their current caseload is 84 families, 128 parents are adults living in the home, and 213 kids. That's what these ladies do every day. Since we started our program, we've served over 550 families and 1,300 children. These are 1,300 kids we would have lost if we didn't have this program. That's how important it is in our world. Why are we so successful? Again, we're not bound by red tape. Our services are voluntary. We can supply a bed, we can help shampoo carpets to improve a home environment, we can mentor parents to improve their parenting skills, we can even buy somebody steel-toed work boots so they can go to work and provide for their family. We have a lot of flexibility. But we can also work with the kiddos directly. We can recognize cognitive or behavioral issues and get those support services in place to take the pressure off the family, so that if they're dealing with those issues, it lessens that stress, that environment, and starts building them towards a positive future. You know, we're going to keep assessing everything we do. We want our As on our report card to stay put. This program is, there's been attempts to replicate it throughout the state, and it's failed. And the reason that it's not been successful is because they don't have the partnerships that we have here. They don't have the Family Resource Center. They don't have the city stepping up. They don't have all these groups coming together saying, "You know what? We're going to, we're going to work for the kids. That's what we're about." We're going to strengthen those partnerships, take that holistic approach, the wraparound versus the same old thing, because it was failing. We were pulling kids out of home, and we were failing. And finally, it's a one-kid-at-a-time mentality. We're going after one at a time, and we've been successful 1,300 times so far. Finally, this is just a personal note, in my 30-plus years, I've never seen a grant-funded program repeat funding six years in a row, because it's on a year-to-year basis. And every time we go back to this group and we show them our successes and what we're doing, we get funded again, six times, and we're going to go for a lucky seven here pretty soon. So that's the high-speed, low-drag version. I apologize for throwing a lot of information to you, but I want you to understand where this program came from and why it's so successful, the partnerships, and if Ann has anything to add, I'll be happy to shut up and let her talk.
Our main goal was, at the beginning, was when officers go to home and knock on the door.
Maybe you ought to go to the microphones, so people at the pump can hear it.
So the main goal of the program was, when an officer goes to the door, knocks and goes in for a call and says, "Oh, not enough to remove the child," but they leave with that gut feeling of, "I know I'm going to be back, I know I'm going to have to take him out of the home." That's where our advocates come in. So the response advocates actually make cold calls. So they get a referral from the police officers, and they have 24 hours to respond. They actually are city employees, based out of the Pittsburgh Police Department, and they will knock on the door and say, "Hey, you know, I'm Diane Gamble, who's one of our response advocates. The city is very concerned about your kids. What can we do to help you keep them in the home?" And that's kind of how they get in the door. So they're looking at it as, the families that they go to are aware that the city's concerned about what's going on, and so we always do include that piece in, because everybody in the city should be concerned about all our kids. And so it helps get them in the door, that they know that other people are concerned about what's going on. We will sometimes keep families for a couple of years. Maybe we don't see them every day, but sometimes they need to call up and talk to the advocates just for support, because they have no family. So our advocates become the support for those families. So the, our response advocates, we have two fabulous response advocates, and they do a great job. If anybody can go make cold calls, knock on a door, they see all types of things, but the goal is to keep those kids in the home before they have to be removed. Our response advocates are mandated reporters, and if they have to, they will report, and kids will be removed, but for the most part, they do everything possible to keep them in the home, and they work super hard. And we have great support at the police, through the police station, and through the city, so we do appreciate that. And we do try to train frontline personnel to notice child abuse and neglect, so that they can refer and make those calls also.
Sounds like a great program. Thank you all.
Is there any, is there any way for, I know this is mostly grant-funded, but people that are passionate about kids and families to contribute to this or help with this program in any way?
Why, yes, there is. You can give directly to, you can give directly to the response advocates here at the Pittsburgh Police Station. The Family Resource Center is a fiscal agent, so it'll run through there, and it will go straight to their program. We are, we do get a review every year from the Children's Cabinet. They come down and do a review for us at the end of each year before I write the next grant, and so far, we do a fabulous job, and they're actually trying to find money to replicate our program in other parts of the state, so.
How, how do those two advocates handle the workload? I know grant money, there's only so much, but do you foresee ever wanting a third?
We could use a third, but right now, fiscally, it's not possible. We started out with a grant for $89,000, and so it pays a salary, and it pays for phone, and just, we have some flex dollars to help provide stuff for families if we can't find it elsewhere, and then the city does match with another response advocate, so we're super lucky with that. And one day, one day.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you all. Appreciate the presentation, learning about this. Move on to item D, revolving loan fund. Director of Economic Development Blake Benson will provide information on projects that were assisted by the revolving loan fund over the past two years.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to provide a quick recap. You know, we present a lot of projects that are requesting revolving loan fund assistance. Sometimes it's good to just step back and look at projects that have been in place over the last couple of years. So I know that's a busy chart. I'll take that as a good sign, because we have a lot going on. So basically, over the last two years, we have expended about $3.8 million in revolving loan fund assistance. As a reminder, the revolving loan fund is supported by a sales tax that I believe has been in place since the late '80s roughly, here in Pittsburgh, thereabouts, but it really is the difference-maker as far as our community being able to support projects that a lot of other communities our size would not be able to. So I know that Darren may have some comments here, but I think, obviously, Block 22 was a big part of that, but when you look at the other projects, I think it's pretty notable that it's very diversified in the number of projects that we've brought to you for consideration, but also how that funding has been distributed out by project. So again, I know that's pretty busy, but we have another slide, because we've gotten some questions about how that funding is split up. Obviously, with housing being a big area of focus for the city moving forward, and housing having such a big impact on economic development, probably three or four different projects have requested revolving loan fund assistance and have been approved. So that's kind of the split between commercial development and housing development. And the final slide, when we talk about supporting local businesses and local business owners, that's the split on outside entities that have received revolving loan fund assistance as opposed to local entities. And if I recall, the non-local, that would probably be two of the housing developments.
Yep.
And even those were, you know, Silverback, obviously, Mickey has a Pittsburgh tie, he's a Pittsburgh guy, and the other one, the Pittsburgh Highlands, they're unique to southeast Kansas, so it's a regional group. But I think that's a, that's a good slide, that money that's being generated in our community is being reinvested with local businesses and local business owners and local projects. So I don't know if Darren or Jamie has anything to add.
There seems to be some confusion that this represents a list of checks that have been written from taxpayer dollars. Most of these, and I don't know if you're prepared to answer that, most of these are loans. It's called a revolving loan fund. The only one without seeing the list, I know, under the non-local, the $7.50, the $4.50 that was been, that was given to P&amp;L was a loan. It's going to be paid back. So maybe the most important thing to take away is, every one of these projects is unique. I can't really read from this far, even with three different kinds of lenses in these glasses, but the EDAC and the City Commission has always done a good job, I think, at making sure that people justify what they're about, and for most part, give this money out with some restrictions, like, "You're going to pay it back, we'll give you a low interest rate, but it's a loan." We don't just write a lot of checks at the city, and actually, I can't think of too many projects where we've just cut a check to a company for coming to Pittsburgh. We get asked that a lot, but we manage to let them understand that we're here to fill a little portion of it. But that's a lot of money. That's almost $4 million, and even Block 22, it sits there as one big blue project, but that's a combination of housing, that's a combination of commercial. There's a lot involved in that project, so I just hope people don't think that we're just up here writing checks to companies. Most of these are loans.
And there's another slide that we could have included, showing going back about the last five or six years, and Pittsburgh has seen or announced almost $500 million in economic development projects just in the last five or six years, and Jay, I believe, were 6%?
That's the city share.
So the city's share of that is roughly 6%. So that's a, that's a pretty good return on investment for the taxpayer's dime, and I think it shows that the city and the commission and the leadership are being very prudent with those dollars and making sure that there are projects that will advance our local economy.
And Blake, does the interest that we collect go back into the revolving loan fund?
Yes, it does. So Silverback, I believe, is a 3% interest, and that goes back, not only do we get the principal amount repaid, but also the interest as well.
Blake, do we, are there any projects that we use revolving loan fund money that, without commission approval?
Most of the, most of the requests go before the EDAC, and they vet this, particularly if it, if a business were to come and request revolving loan fund assistance, then absolutely they would have to appear before the EDAC, and then normally, we ask them to join us when we present it to the commission as well.
I'm talking about the wild-red road approach. Was there a request to the EDAC committee for a recommendation for approval from the commission?
Not to my knowledge.
We went through this. Do you want me to go through it for you?
I just, that, I asked.
That project wasn't done because it was a revolving loan fund project, that project was done because we had an existing contract with a, contract with a contractor that was already approved by the commission, so that one certainly.
Right, and that, that contract was for, to be used out of dedicated street sales tax money, and that money was not used, it was from street sales tax money for that approach. It was reused, used from revolving loan funds, and the street sales tax dedicated money. My understanding should have been used for streets inside Pittsburgh.
And I'm sorry, you're mistaken, Commissioner. And I'm sorry, you're mistaken, Commissioner, but that contract is for any city money. That's a citywide contract that you approved that is not tied to one specific source.
So we can use that in other cities?
Are you going to let me talk? Because I know.
Sure, go ahead.
It was passed as part of the sales tax for the streets, but it is not limited to that in any way. That's a citywide contract. And thank you for bringing it up so we clear it up. There's one other project on here that we do want to mention because you asked, that didn't go before the commission. I think it's fifteen thousand dollars for equipment over at the Plaster Center. And Blake, I think you recall that one, it was
To.
Some piece of equipment that was needed for one of the track meets and, uh, it was a critical point. So anything under twenty thousand doesn't come before the commission.
Well, just to follow up during that, I understand what the contract was for. And my understanding it was for streets inside the city limits of Pittsburgh, not into Frontenac. I have another question.
Was also money used from, spent from revolving loan fund above the recommended, uh, amount that E D A C approved?
Are you talking about the road, the Frontenac Road?
No, I'm talking about the Fifth Street, uh, demolition project. How much was approved by E D A C to demo that building?
When, when that recommendation was, was forwarded to the commission, the, the amount of the demolition was unknown because at that time, the, the city was working with property owner to try to get them to cover some of the cost. The E D A C, if I recall, and I'm going back a year and a half, if I recall, the E D A C knew the urgency of that building because it was literally falling into the street. And, and Becky Gray was here and, and really reiterated that it was a safety hazard. The E D A C felt it was also an economic development issue because it was affecting our community's appearance, not only with the, with it being dangerous. Um, so they, they said, we feel like this is a good use of economic development dollars. How much should we recommend? And at that time, the amount was a moving target because the city didn't know if or how much the property owner was going to pay to it. So at that time, they author, they issued a recommendation that authorized the city to utilize revolving loan funds to take care of that issue.
And I might point out that, uh, the rev- these, this group is a recommendation only. They don't, they don't, uh, they don't pass this, uh, law. They recommend to us. It's up to us to go forward with it. So the fact that they may or may not have, have recommended the entire amount is just that. It was a recommendation.
I understand that.
And we cho- we chose to do what we felt was necessary. And I also want to say, I really appreciate the people that serve on this E D A, uh, C committee because, uh, they put a lot of time into it and a lot of, uh, their business expertise into this.
I also appreciate them because they do have the expertise to guide us through their recommendations. And I understand, Patrick, I've been a commissioner for seven years, how the process works. They make a, they get a request, they make a recommendation for approval, they send it to the commission for approval. We did not approve money, uh, our recommendation to that E D A C for the approach uh, on Wild Red Road, and we didn't approve it as a commission. So that's my point. So from now on, uh, we have measures set up so that if any money spent from revolving loan fund, it will go to the committee. They will look at it, study it, and make a recommendation for approval from the commission.
Let's clarify because, uh, your, these are projects. This is an application process to the E D A C. But we use, um, some of that E D A C money for, um, other economic development things that are within the city manager's purview.
And I understand that money is sales tax money. And, you know, somebody needs to ask questions when sales tax money from citizens are being spent. And that's what I will continue to do.
And I think everybody needs to understand that just because the commissioner would like to authorize all of the expenditures, there is a limit, as Commissioner McNay is speaking about, where the city staff and the city manager can spend money. And in both of those instances that you brought up, um, all of those rules were followed. All of the money was spent according to our rules. That money has been audited. That's money that you're talking about from several years ago. So I appreciate you bringing it up and letting everybody know the clarity with which we spend money, the transparency that we do our business and the audits that we pay for that are arduous to go through everything. And the fact that you would like to have more authority over some of that money is not relevant. There's no restriction that's been broken in any case. Well, I think you've insinuated that something bad has happened, Commissioner.
I didn't say that either. I'm just saying that I thought we should have.
I think it's important that the citizens understand that we follow every rule and we do everything by the book.
And they understand that the commissioner's going to ask questions when they have questions. And that's what I will continue to do. Thank you.
And continue to listen to the answers. Thank you.
I am listening to your answers. That's why, thank you very much for your answer.
One thing, Blake, I want, uh, you apologize for this graph that's up there. I think there's no need for an apology. I think every one of these projects that you see on this go to make Pittsburgh a better city for, for us all to enjoy.
Certainly.
Yeah, Patrick and I both attended the, uh, Kansas Economic Outlook, um, as did many of you out there. And these projects are exactly the kind of things that they were talking about. The, the reason that, uh, Crawford County and is weathering, you know, the, the economic sort of storm that's happening in the rest of the state and the nation is because we have projects like this that we've done that are holding us up, um, housing projects and, and things like that.
And I, I certainly will echo the, the mayor's comments about how much work the E D A C puts into vetting projects. Um, you don't often hear about the, the noes that come out of the E D A C, but, uh, there are noes. There, there are projects that they determine that either they're not a good risk, uh, the applicant hasn't put enough thought behind it. It just wouldn't be an appropriate use of economic development dollars. So they, they do have to say no. Uh, but please know that that is a part of the process as well.
Thank you, Blake.
Thank you. And they spend a lot of time on joint tours with the commission, so sometimes, um, to make sure there's not a disconnect. Um, today was a good example. We get all of you together, so that handoff is seamless and people understand that it's not just a, a rubber stamp.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to, uh, item C, special presentation, street sales tax projects update. Director of Public Utilities Matt Bacon will provide an update on street sales tax projects.
Good evening, Mayor Fisher.
Good evening.
So, um, I was debating on a couple of different ways to, to approach this this evening. Um, I'll just start here. Uh, our street sales tax on the current year, we've collected about one point six two million. Um, our expenditures to date are about one point six three million. Obviously, we had some reserve in behind there. Um, our per month on sales tax for this current year is just a shade under a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a month is what we're collecting currently. Um, we're currently, if the end of the year, October, November, December finishes out, um, this year alone, we'll collect around two point one five million in sales tax from the street sales tax. Those are both taxes combined running concurrently. Um, obviously, our expenditures this year, we put a million dollars into Broadway and, and South Stillwell and those type of projects was one of our big ones that expended. Um, projects this year that we've completed, uh, Fifth Street and Sixth Street, uh, down in, between Georgia and Walnut and around the West Side School area, a little bit on miles. Um, we're going to try to drop back into miles and finish some more of that next year. There is a spot on Sixth and Georgia that someone keeps calling me about. They won't leave a phone number or a name.
You've had multiple calls.
And calls me a few other expletives along the way.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks.
But, um, the problem is, is that road divides and splits the drainage. And we've looked at a couple of diff- different options for that drainage and then we've got busy. But our plan is, we're going to drop back and we're going to do Chestnut Street from Martin Street all the way up to Ninth Street. And when we get back into those projects, we'll revisit Sixth and Georgia. We haven't forgot about it. There was just some challenges with some of the drainage along that street.
I believe in you.
Because of overlays and a few different things in the way that it transitions. Um, but that's an example. The school did their project and then we kind of followed up behind after they put their safe, their safe rooms into that school. Um, we did some of the same with all of them, trying to r- wrap that around. Um, Thirteenth Street between Elm and Joplin and Fourteenth Street, um, from Broadway to Joplin, we put that on the, on the docket to come in behind as the school project wrapped up. Just made for a nice clean transition and, and a lot of different work there. So we, we worked, we were kind of worked ourselves around with that. Um, we did Martin down by Lakeside between Georgia and, uh, College. We're currently working on up in the northeast industrial park. Um, there were some bad spots up there. Part of the road segment was falling apart. Um, it's an overlay project, so it's a nice one to just kind of squeeze in. Um, the way we worked with it, I just talked about Chestnut Street. Um, the Broadway and Stillwell, Concrete Wise, Joplin. And then we've completed our rejuvenator project. Um, and a few of those, we still have to do final payment on. Those will be coming up. But chasing a few little odds and inches punch lists, get away from the bond, that kind of stuff. Um, I brought with me, this is something we put out at, um, IP twenty thirty. It's kind of hard to see. It's last year's projects, this year's projects and next year's projected projects of what we're trying to work with, um, and, and those projects that we'd like to do, uh, next year. Obviously, some of those, we will start.
You have a printed out map of that computer paper size on the, on the project?
I don't have an eight and a half by eleven. Whatever, it, you'll see if you look at that, that's pretty hard to, once you scrunch down, it gets.
Well, I've had people ask me about those projects.
We, we are working. Um, if you've been on our G I S online, um, and looked at some of that stuff, we are working to try and get those projects into that ESRI online so you can see those by year online. I, it's been something we've been working on through the summer. We only have one G I S guy and we ask him to do a whole lot. He's working on water modeling and, and land bank and, and census and all kinds of stuff. So I, it's not going near as fast as I'd like, but we are working on it, that we are trying to get all those from Clearback whenever the first street sales tax started till present.
And this map, this map is being filmed right now, so the people at home are watching it. So if somebody watches this rerun of this, which I believe is on hi-def now on Crocan and if you can see it on the other channel on Cox, but, uh,
Hopefully you get fine ID though there.
Commissioner myself, they want to check it out, it's on there. But it is on the website. It'll be on the website.
So Matt, I was gonna say, how do you, uh, what's the process to determine what next year's projects would be?
So next year's projects are some stuff that we've had on the radar that we look at. Um, age, um, use, area, we spread it across the different quadrants of town, where we've been. Um, and then, uh, there's just a handful of things that go into it. Um, obviously, some of the projects we pick next year, we want to finish up around College Street and, um, Lakeside School, those two side streets around Lakeside and clean up around that school. You know, some were high traffic, high volume areas, but we don't want to forget the neighborhoods either. Um, so it's a combination of both and just where they stand. You know, there's a, there's a big part of next year that, um, you know, what we've worked with Martin and Chestnut on is, um, we have an on-call bidding that, on-call for asphalt removal that they go in with machines and they strip the asphalt clean off the brick or concrete road. And do that, those, that happened on Martin and Chestnut. That's going to happen next year on more of these side streets off the Broadway corridor. Um, those are, I dash those on that line. I can't say we're going to start in the north and go, go south or vice versa, or start in the middle and go out. Those are kind of, they're all kind of their own unique thumbprint on those side streets from drainage challenges to other repairs and those type of things. So, um, we're, we kind of evaluate those on a case-by-case basis and then budget allowances, but we are working with a contractor. We probably, um, where we did Fifth and Sixth Street this year, we started in February of this year. And then it rained till July, pretty much every day. And we took a lot of heat for the fact that we're never getting done, we're never getting done. When you open up those brick streets, they gotta dry. If we're going to have a, if we're going to put down a quality product at the end of the day, that brick has to be kind of dried out. We can't have the, we want that to be as dry as it can. That usually takes a day or two to get all that moisture out of the seams of the brick and everything like that. We heavy, we put down, um, uh, a heavy dose of oil and then put down a, a, uh, leveling course and, and a surface course over that for rigibility. And hopefully we have a long-term lasting effect on those streets. I mean, we're looking at quality at the end of time. We're not, we're not just going in and trying to just slather some, slather some on there to say that we did it. Um, we're, we're looking to address that in the ADA ramps.
You said you start in February. What, what's the temperature, ideal temperature you can operate at?
Typically thirty-five and rising.
You can?
Yeah. Forty, it's a little better. Um, but yeah, you, you could go thirty-five. Not ideal.
Do you, um, put some money kind of aside, uh, in like a contingency for new businesses that come that might need or, um, some upgrades on the street? So for example, Drop the Hbury, I think that street on Rose is a little sketchy.
It's rough. It's been rough for a while.
I just wondered how we accommodate for, you know, the growth that we're seeing in businesses that come in.
We try to, as far as a planning, a planning standpoint, if we know they're going to be in there and it's something, it, it, it shows up on our radar that way, but there's, um, those are kind of unique. I wouldn't say that we've ne- necessarily done that in the past. Um, we work with businesses and we try to coordinate, especially with construction projects. Um, you know, say Beaufort Christie when they built their surgery center, some of those projects along Rouse, the edge and those apartments that were going in and the Walmart, those are some projects that we delayed doing Rouse and Centennial and some of those because we knew those projects were coming. They were going to create more construction traffic. And so instead of getting out in front of them, we had to tell they were out of the way and then we come in. Um, as far as the downtown corridor, I can't say that we've really quite had that experience yet. Um, some of the stuff's repaired on Seventh and Pine and some of that, well, Pine, we needed it anyways. But then there's a couple of deals that we had, water main brakes that helped accelerate a few of those. But, um, those are the kind of things that we'll look at as well as higher traffic areas and those type of stuff that we get into next year.
Matt, I've had some questions on the fifty-fifty match on sidewalks. Uh, how's that going? And, uh, I, the woman that I talked to was kind of backed up. Uh, was waiting a long time, so I think I, uh, centered to talk to you.
There's, um, those, the fifty-fifty match program, um, is going well. We've, uh, we've actually got a lot of, a lot of people participating in it, depending on how they fund it. Um, and they participate that a way, can express some of that. We do have the contractor, um, is doing that at Sprouls. They're on, call contractor. We also asked them to do some of the other work, so we're trying to work. They're actually doing asphalt removal. So we work in between and it's kind of a timing thing. Um, Cameron kind of administrators, administrates more of that because it requires the engineering department. They go out and take the measurements and try to give them an estimate. And then we try to work them back in from that standpoint. So, um, but there's, there's still a pretty good list on.
What's the budget for that?
It, it's fifty thousand.
Do we use that?
Per year, up, up to fifty thousand to match.
Oh, okay, I got you.
And we've done some things where, when the program first kicked off, where we didn't have everybody signed up and everything like that. We've, we've worked to partner with, um, Commerce Bank chose to do all their sidewalks.
Mm-hmm.
And we worked with them on some of their stuff. Um, and also, uh, Jolly Fox, everything was out in the right of way. And some of that to work on some of those matching funds with businesses as well. So we have, we have utilized those dollars.
And Matt, if you had to estimate on, in a given year, how many, what percentage of the streets that could be resurfaced that are on your list that you're calling through to figure out which one is going to get to go? What percent of it are we addressing every year?
Um, that's, that's kind of an on-the-spot tough question.
Twenty, twenty-eight.
Yeah, you know, I mean, if you draw, look at it from addressing in a lane mile standpoint, if you look at last year, I'm going to say we did fifty-two miles of the three hundred and sixteen that we touched. We touched a lane mile in some way, shape, form or fashion to address some sort of maintenance issue, whether it be, um, preventative maintenance, rehabilitation, um, a structural repair and some, you know, and that, that gets a little skewed in the fact that I, in twenty eighteen, we went from, on Rouse from Atkinson to Quincy doing individual spot repairs. So it gets a little skewed in that part. They're all spot repairs through that long swath, but, you know, um.
So let me put it a different way. If you spend two million dollars a year on the roads, how much could you spend if you had unlimited manpower and time?
Oh, I could spend millions. If, if we get, if we go past the Band-Aid stage of putting surfaces on stuff and we get to ripping stuff out, correcting the drainage, putting down a new base and putting down pu- pavement, I can spend all kinds of millions of dollars.
I mean, we could easily spend ten to fifteen million a year, just because of the number of roads.
South Rouse was three million dollars. And that's one mile. Was three million dollars, and that's one mile, total rebuild.
And so every year that you don't do that gap, all those roads get worse. And so there's people out there that are like, you have never been down my road, and, and Matt's like, there's five people that live on that road. Um, so as much as, if you want to hit everybody that you can, Rouse and Broadway, how many, how many people travel down those roads?
Thousands.
And so you just have to try to make it work where you can.
I mean, you know, you think, you look at some of the traffic counts around Fourth and Broadway area, you know, there was five to seven thousand people off each little spur of that intersection on some of the KDOT traffic maps and stuff like that, and that's part of those things that we submitted from. Um, I'm, I'm gonna, you just said it earlier.
A Band-Aid on some of these, people don't understand when they see asphalt put down on a road and it doesn't hold up as long as they expect it to hold up, and I, I tell them what you tell them. Without a good base, that's what's gonna happen, and we can't afford.
And we try to fix as much as that we can when we get through there, um, backfill soft spots, those type of deals. Um, we try to address all that as much as we can. Um, and again, we, you know, we want a quality product that even then stands up, you know, for the length of time too, so we do that.
Okay.
Now, Matt, what's the status of the, uh, Click It and Fix It app that you talked about before?
See Click Fix.
See Click.
Oh, the See Click Fix Gaver. Um, yes, so we currently have that rolled out, uh, to department heads, and we are utilizing it. We are working some bugs out, um, right now. In fact, I did one. There, there, sometimes it's some weird anomalies in there. I located one in First and Catalpa, which showed up, it's KCI Airport. And I'm not sure how that happened in a boundary deal, but, um, we're, we're working out and making sure that we are trying to get the different request that we would get in, that they go to the right division, the right department head, and they get passed along to the right person. So I would say, um, well, where someone tells us to, I mean, we'll force, we'll force the issue, but we're, we're real. We're, I would say we're closer than we're not, um, you know, I, probably a twenty-twenty rollout, I'd say was, is probably reasonable. IT may not like that me for that, but I think we're, I think we're that close.
Internally, we've done a couple.
Internally, we're com- com- we're completing those, we're also, there is a second aspect of just the See Click Fixes, we're partnering with our City Works app. And, and so we're closing some, some technology gaps there on that. I mean, we report a lot, you know, when I'm out. Um, and I get a chance to, to use it and, you know, that's what we're really trying to do is use it and list a deal and list a picture and make sure it maps right. And what information didn't get put on there that needs to be, or what didn't make it clear and who submitted some different things that may actually fall in other, and then how that gets passed between departments. You know, I might get something in my, in my bucket that belongs in parks and, or vice versa, um, and those type of things. So we're, we're working through some of those scenarios on that, but yeah, it's, it's getting real close and, and, you know, we're, um, you know, we're working on potholes and, and trees and limbs and, and water filter issues, and sometimes wastewater issue is a drainage issue and, and so. But anyways, we're, we're trying to clean some of that stuff up.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate the.
I'm, I'm not done yet.
You may not be done.
You can tell you'll be done. Hey, one thing I want to touch on real, real quick is while we're talking about dollars and where we spend and how we plan and everything like that. You know, last time I was up here, what, a week or two ago, we were talking about applying for a community block development grant for Fourth and Broadway and those because we got rejected from the KDOT See Clip program. So we tried to, we sped up that and accelerated that process and put all that stuff together to su- submit for that grant. We haven't heard anything about that grant yet. Um, but we, we did submit, um, you know, we did the project on Quincy between Broadway and Joplin, and that got cut short because of funding and budgets and those type of things, and that program got cost share. So KDOT came out with a cost sharing grant, um, that we turned in an application for, um, they review it in October and March. So we've worked with Olson and, and, uh, Cameron and I, and we came up with looking at a project for that. And so we rushed around to put that project together to look at what that looks like to extend that to the end of cost share on that part. Um, and we got it into the October review. Um, and so today, we got a letter from KDOT, um, discussing that program. And just to talk about the value of the dollars that are out there and how many communities are hurting and looking for different ways. There's already been a hundred, a hundred applicants for the first round. Uh, ninety-two of those applications submit a ninety-two million dollar local investment. The KDOT portion of that represents two hundred and forty-two million dollar KDOT funds for the cost sharing. So we're competing with a lot. Um, the baseline, um, represents a fifteen percent, uh, match inside of there. You know, it can do anything from roadway rail, airport, bicycle, pedestrian, and public transit. So that's other projects that we're, type of projects we're competing against, and again, they're reviewed twice a year, so.
Do they say what budget amount?
No, they're still trying to figure out how they're gonna pay for what they got and how they select, so they're working. I did, as part of this document, I don't have it, and I don't, I don't know if they published that or not. Um, one other thing while I'm on the KDOT kick here, is we also got the notification about, um, their local consult for the transportation meeting is gonna be October twenty-ninth from one-thirty to four-thirty at Openwood Student Center. So, um, that's a good time if you want to talk about, we need more money for roads and stuff like that, um, to kind of put that on your radar as well. And with that, I am done, if you, if anyone had any more questions.
Thank you, we appreciate all that information.
Especially looking for alternate funding sources.
Move on to, uh, land use plan update. Assistant Planner, Britten. Brennan will provide an update on the land use plan.
Good evening, Commissioners, I will be very brief. So earlier this year, you approved the contract with Auctioner Harry and Hair of Olson Engineering to complete our land use plan, and I just wanted to give a brief update of where we are. Um, you approved that contract in March, and then right away we started work, they started looking at our existing plans and our data sets that we have. In June, we started doing qualitative interviews, um, to collect that qualitative data. In July, we collected the quantitative piece of that, um, through our Shorette Week that many of you participated in. Um, in September, we got the first half of the plan draft to us, it was mostly the summary of the existing plans, so that was copy edited and sent back. Um, and here in the next couple of weeks, we'll be getting the second half, which will really be the meat of that plan. Um, so we will be having an editing session for that, um, I'll make sure that you all know when that is and get a copy of that beforehand. And our steering committee will be a part of that editing session as well. And we just wanted to let you know that it's still going on, and hopefully next month we'll have a formal, or we'll have it to you for formal approval and adoption prior to the end of the year. So this is a sample map of what they're looking for and kind of some of the things that you'll see in that plan along with suggestions for future growth and development in our community.
So Britten, can you, I, I know you just said it, but outline again, um, what, how useful this is, uh, for our community, for, what's the purpose of this?
I think for the, obviously, a comprehensive plan is something that our community is lacking and hasn't had in decades, quite frankly, and this is the base layer of that. And so we have developers coming in saying, we want to buy this building or do something here, what does the community need? And at this point, we don't have an educated, educated facts to back up anything that we say to them when they ask us those questions. Something like this would allow us to say, this is what this land is best suited to be, and this is what the community needs. A land use plan takes a look at not only geographical data, but is also social needs of the community, which is where a lot of that qualitative data comes into place. Um, so it really is tailored to our community. We've had great community, um, showing at many of our events, which is encouraging. Um, and hopefully that will be accurately reflected in our plan.
So do you have a ballpark of how many people, community members, uh, participated in your listening session?
Total, probably two hundred, from the open house to the steering committee to the, um, small group interviews. And then probably more than that, uh, with our survey, so it was a good chunk. We were really happy with the results.
So what's the step, the step after we get this back? I mean, do we go back to the community, or how do we do that?
The edit, or the draft or the final document?
Final document.
The final document, um, we'll obviously bring that to you for formal adoption, and we'll start working on those suggestions, um, and kind of the goals that they place on us um, from the city staff perspective, and we'll also share that with the community, um, for them to see that this is something that professionals have come in and said, um, need to be next steps. And then we'll start looking at what the next step in creating a comprehensive plan, that next leg above the foundation is, um, so that we can stay on top of our planning, um, and get those pieces put together.
Thank you. We look forward to the next presentation. Good job, Britten. And with that, we'll move on to consider the following. Resolution of intent to annex Carpi诺. Consider approval of the resolution, resolution of intent to annex, providing notice that the city of Pittsburgh intends to annex the real estate located at one zero nine seven South Highway sixty-nine owned by Michael K. Carpi诺 and Lynn R. Capino. Approve or disapprove resolution of intent?
Blake wants to stand up there, you know, I think you guys are familiar with this, but we'd be happy to answer any questions.
If it aren't.
Do I have any questions? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved in second at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Ordinance number G one three zero zero, consider adopting ordinance number G one three zero zero. Creating Article Eight in Chapter Forty-two of the Pittsburgh City Code to raise, regulate the use of dockless vehicles within the city limits of the city of Pittsburgh, Kansas, and providing for regulation of permits, fees, and penalties for violations thereof.
Mayor and Commissioner, we're back, we're back with the scooter ordinance. Um, uh, we, we, uh, tabled this, uh, last time because we, uh, we had, uh, James had done some pretty good research. And we, we really didn't, you guys didn't have the time to really look at the research, we didn't give you enough time to look at it. Hopefully you'll had, had a little bit of time to, to look at that, and we're up here now to answer some questions. We also brought reinforcements with us. This is Spencer from Bear Ride, right, so, uh, and he's a, he's the representative from the company who's, who's interested in doing it. You might have seen James and I riding around on some of the scooters, those are Bear Ride scooters that you've seen. I think even some of you have ridden on them, right? But, uh, so this is a good time to ask any questions you have and, and to see if there's anything lingering out there about, about, uh, about scooters.
I have nothing lingering, anyone else?
I have, uh, quite, communities this size and, and, and any, any experience where you've moved into a community, moved, got a university, twenty thousand students?
Yeah, so, um, it actually tends to work out that the smaller a community is, the easier it is to operate in. Uh, as you start to scale up into larger numbers, that becomes a little bit more difficult. Um, I've underseen multiple launches, uh, the, the smaller ones always go the smoothest. So for Pittsburgh, uh, for, uh, for a city this size and a university this size, I would imagine that fifty scooters would be more than adequate, at least for now, and then based on data, if the ridership were high enough, then we might want to expand, uh, further on.
Any other questions or concerns?
Well, I think we have a survey, um, James.
Yep.
Yes, uh, we created a survey, it went out, uh, today. Um, right now, as I looked, there's a hundred and forty-four responses, um, but it's, of course, too early to kind of give results on that, so.
My only and final, not final, but my ending thought on this is I, I can't believe that there isn't already an ordinance that says no non-medical motorized vehicles on sidewalks. Um, I just sort of figured that we had that, so if, if we're gonna bring these in, I mean, I kind of think that that just needs to happen anyway, that we need to say no motorized vehicles on sidewalks, um, but especially if we're bringing this in. I, I would like to see that, not just the downtown, but the whole city. What do you guys think?
Are you asking, before we do this, for us to revisit that ordinance, is that?
I think it needs to happen in conjunction with this.
Well, what, uh, let me jump in, um, we, we have tied it, we have tied this ordinance to whatever that ordinance is. So this ordinance will reflect whatever the, the, the bicycle ordinance says. Um, and I think, uh, we were actually talking about this earlier today, it was Spencer, I think what he was saying was, and why don't you talk about it?
Yeah, sure, um, it, it is pretty common, uh, for cities to have ordinances that say that bikes and, uh, bikes and scooters shouldn't be ridden on sidewalks. Right now, the, uh, the state ordinance around scooters largely just defines them to be treated just like bicycles. So if there were, you know, any kind of ordinance that were to say that, uh, bicycles shouldn't be ridden on sidewalks but instead in streets, then that would also, uh, carry over to scooters as well. Um, what we tend to see is that people primarily ride them on streets when those streets are, uh, conducive to riding like a bike or a scooter. You know, if there's, if there's a shared lane or it's a wide enough road that, uh, the person can feel safe riding on the street, more often than not, they will. Uh, the times that we tend to see people riding on sidewalks is when it's right next to very busy roads that don't have any kind of, uh, shared spaces. But, um, uh, really, the, uh, the street lends itself to better, uh, riding anyway, just because there aren't these kind of four-foot blocks that can be very bumpy. So you tend to get to where you're going more quickly if you're riding on a street, and, uh, we, we usually just kind of see that in the user behavior as it is.
Have you had any statistics on injuries, uh, that you've experienced with your company? And any cities that you were banned from because of the injuries or?
No, um, so we don't, we haven't really seen very many injuries. Uh, we get a couple people that will trickle in and, uh, mention getting into an accident. But, um, more often than not, when we, when, I mean, like, we don't, we don't really get anybody uh, trying to sue us over, over injuries, uh, we haven't seen any lawsuits or anything like that. Uh, the few times, the few cases where I have heard about injuries, it's actually just been anecdotal, where I would run into somebody, uh, while out operating, collecting scooters and whatnot, and they would mention getting in door wreck. Usually they said something like, I was being stupid and it was my own fault. Uh, the CDC did an extensive report in Austin, uh, regarding st- uh, scooter-related accidents and injuries. Um, the, uh, the report, which I think was mentioned in James's, uh, report, um, largely followed, uh, a few companies that were operating in Austin at the time that were all using a scooter called a nine-bot. Uh, some of the things that I will mention about the re- the accidents that were reported on is that fifty percent of the people who reported having accidents, um, uh, had it attributed to rough, poor road conditions, rough road conditions. Now, um, the scooters that were being used were much less robust than the ones that we were bringing in. So they've got seven-inch hard rubber wheels instead of, uh, what we use, which is ten-inch vacuum tire wheels. We also use front suspension and have a lower center of gravity, uh, and front and rear, front and rear mechanical brakes. Uh, the nine-bots instead were, uh, like I said, seven-inch hard rubber tires, which are, uh, do not, which do not perform nearly as well in even standard road conditions. Um, but also the center of gravity where the battery is, is in the post of the handlebar, so it becomes much easier to fall off of it, uh, especially when hitting any kind of crack or bump. So, uh, while we don't have any data, uh, there hasn't, you know, we're, we're too young in this to, to really know. We do believe that just having a more robust, uh, vehicle will help reduce some of those, uh, some of those accident rates.
So if the road conditions is what's creating injuries or accidents, what kind of liability would the city have uh, because of the road conditions that they're rolled on?
As far as I know, none. Um, the users are accepting a terms of service where they are, uh, accepting, uh, responsibility.
How do you keep, uh, what, what are the age limits to ride one of these scooters?
It kind of depends on the, the city ordinance. I believe that the ordinance that we're accepting here would be eighteen and up age limits. Um, we personally have no way of enforcing that, but, uh, anytime that we do have age limits uh, in any of the ordinances that we have, we have a, uh, a local regulations page that pops up right before anybody scans any scooter, every time they scan them, that gives bullet points of the local rules and regulations. Things like always wear a helmet, never ride on sidewalks, riders must be at least eighteen years a page.
How do you go about, um, gathering these when they're spread out or on private property? Can you just really briefly describe how, how quickly that response is and, and, uh, that's one thing that I hear is that these things are gonna be littered all over the town, and so could you just kind of speak to that, please?
Of course, yeah, so, um, they have GPS on them, and our goal operationally in any area that we are is to touch every single scooter. and our goal operationally in any area that we are is to touch every single scooter at least once a day. Generally, the plan is to have the entire fleet rebalanced, that's moved to what we call deployment zones, the areas where we'll line them up nice and neat for people to ride them out throughout the day. They get collected and brought back to deployment zones. Generally, what we try to do is have our, uh, have our redeployment or our rebalancing back to deployment zones happen late at night when there's, uh, very little traffic, and kind of park wherever we need to. And then more of it happens, uh, occasionally throughout the day, but usually throughout the day is when we're responding to reports. It's when we are, uh, fixing scooters that have been broken, and it's when we're swapping, uh, batteries for scooters that are being ridden a lot through that day. The battery swapping also takes place while we are rebalancing scooters. So at the beginning of each day, the goal by nine AM is to have every scooter lined up in rows of ten, uh, in the different deployment zones throughout the area with full batteries.
How do, how do you pay for one of these if you ride?
There's an app through, uh, through a smartphone that you connect your credit card to. You add money to your account, you scan them to unlock them, scan them and take a picture of them to show that you've parked properly, uh, whenever you want to end your ride. They charge a dollar to unlock and generally fifteen cents per minute, uh, while you're riding. So a ten-minute ride would be two dollars and fifty cents.
So what happens when you're riding it ten, for ten minutes, it, what, they go fifteen miles an hour?
Yes.
Will it shut off in ten minutes, and what happens then?
No, it, it shuts off whenever you end your ride.
It'll just charge you.
Yeah.
For the minutes used.
Exactly.
So James, how long does it take you to get downtown to PSU?
About ten minutes.
About ten minutes.
And isn't it correct in the way that you guys have written this, that each company should have multiple ways that people can pay?
Yes, uh, that was something that I was a little bit worried about at first, because there are limitations in the technology, but we now have protocols in place to deal with, uh, deal with individuals who don't, are, are, are cash-only, and deal with individuals who don't have smartphones. For cash-only individuals, they would simply just need to get a prepaid gift card, um, and then call into our customer service to make sh, if they have any problems adding it to their VRide account. For, uh, individuals without a smartphone, they just call our customer service line, and, um, so long as they've set up a VRide account in the same way, where they just set it up with the customer support and give them, uh, like a, a gift card or debit, uh, card number, um, the customer service, uh, representative will unlock the scooter or bike that, uh, they're next to, and then they call back again when they want to end their ride, and that customer service representative will end their ride as well.
You already have somebody in, in town that will do the rebalance?
That is correct, yes, we have one person in town, we'll likely hire at least one more, uh, if we bring scooters here.
And I, if I might, uh, just to address the liability aspect quickly that, that Chuck brought up, as part of the application process, uh, any dockless, uh, vehicle, uh, potential permitee will have to sign an indemnification agreement, uh, before they will be issued a license or a permit. And also, uh, as part of the insurance requirement under this ordinance, they would have to agree to add the city as an additional insured on their insurance policy, so. Just wanna make that clear.
I, I know it feels like we're stringing you along, but I, it feels a little discourteous to make a decision tonight when we just issued a survey, so.
Sure, um.
We, we probably, I mean, we were talking about when that would be deployed anyway, it's, it's a little late in the year now to deploy them, so.
Yeah, likely, um, you know, even if you guys had decided, "Yeah, we want this absolutely right now," um, and, you know, there was unanimous yes, um, you know, we still likely wouldn't launch until the spring.
The spring, okay.
Yeah.
Good. And, and keep in mind, a lot of the questions that we answered tonight are specific to his company. This is an ordinance regulating companies, which he is just one of. So there's a good chance that if anybody heard anything tonight about, uh, and that's not how, I mean, w- w- we don't want to prevent competition, but, but being the guinea pig sometimes is, uh, it's good. And we're a small community, maybe you will be the only company here, but I don't want people to think that we're regulating how he runs his company.
And in that spirit, the ordinance that we, that you have in front of us is just regulating companies like this, not an individual who just owns the type of scooter, correct?
Correct.
And they, and they did just roll out, uh, Bear Ride scooters in, in Wichita, about two months ago?
Yeah, about two months ago, yeah.
Any, any issues or anything?
Not really, not, nothing out of the ordinary.
Okay, so we're gonna table this till we hear about the survey?
Sure.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinance number G thirteen oh one. Consider adopting ordinance number G thirteen oh one, regulating taxi cabs in the city of Pittsburgh. Approve or disapprove?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, we were looking at our, uh, taxi cab ordinance, and it doesn't look like it's been touched since nineteen seventy-five. And so we, we, staff has gone through it, and some of the things we were doing, we weren't even recovering our costs on, like the background check, uh, for drivers, uh, was twenty dollars. We're proposing a third, being increased to thirty dollars. With our inspection fee for the cab, we were, weren't charging anything at all for that. We're, we're proposing a twenty-five-dollar fee, 'cause the police have to, we have to take time to have a police officer come outside and, and go through the, the, the taxi cab, make sure it's, it's safe, and, and all those things. And we just cleaned up a little bit of, some of the verbiage, it was in, verbiage, it was in the, uh, the ordinance, to, uh, make it more clear, uh, on what's required, uh, of a taxi cab and what's required of a taxi cab driver in the city of Pittsburgh. So, uh, with Henry's assistance, we drafted a new ordinance, and, uh, we're just asking for you to approve that tonight.
I just have one question, and it keeps coming up in my mind. Uh, you talk about, in this ordinance, about the insurance that the cab company has to carry. How do we know? Like, we all know, people are driving around Pittsburgh, and they pay one month insurance on their car, their liability insurance. And then they drop it, and nobody knows.
I, I believe.
How do we know that this isn't going to happen to the cab company?
I believe that, that we're, we're on the, on the policy, aren't we?
Yes, that's correct.
So, that if they drop, cease coverage, we're notified as well.
Okay, okay, that's, that's my only issue. Great.
Do we have anywhere on our website, um, uh, taxi cabs that have an approved license, so people would know that they would be?
I believe we've only got one taxi cab currently in the city of Pittsburgh.
Maybe we could find somewhere, so people would know, I feel like, uh, individuals would know that they were an approved licensed cab and not.
We can look at that.
Somebody riding around.
Seems like I've seen more than one.
I know.
Running around. So.
Well, there's more than one car, but there's only one company.
I see, okay, okay, that's it, that's, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, got it.
What's the difference between taxi cabs and Ubers? Do we regulate Uber to the same?
I'm gonna see if Henry can answer.
No, we don't.
We don't inspect the cars that, who are, we don't even know, would we know who provides that service? Doesn't matter.
Police Department, I don't, I don't believe.
We don't have a process for, uh, the answer to your question is we don't have a process for licensing Uber drivers, um, so.
Do they pay the, does Uber pay the business license fee to operate within the city?
No. We have, we have no way of regulating Ubers, and I know, that I'm aware of this.
Do we have Uber here?
Yeah.
Yes. Ubers everywhere.
Don't use it, never used it here. I've used it in other cities, just not in Pittsburgh.
Okay, any other questions or concerns?
I move to approve, there are none.
I second. It's been moved in second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ordinance passes. Thank you. Ordinance number G thirteen oh two. Consider adopting ordinance number G thirteen oh two, amending section seventy-eight dash one-one-six of the Pittsburgh City Code to prohibit parking on the south side of Park Street between Broadway and College Streets.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, we're looking at prohibiting parking on the south side of Park Street. Uh, you'll be running from Broadway to College. Uh, to give you a point of reference, uh, that's, uh, between Casey's and the funeral home there on Broadway, running three blocks to the west. And to give you kind of a picture as to why we're looking at doing that, there's, the street is only twenty-four foot wide, and when you have, uh, vehicles that, uh, park anywhere close to each other, across from each other, uh, it's very challenging, if not impossible, to get vehicles through there. So, uh, we'd just like to have that posted, there's no parking there.
I've been on that street, and you're right, it is a challenge.
But there are lots of streets in town with that same situation that also don't have no parking. So, how did this come about? Was this, uh, citizen-driven or something we identified?
Uh, typically, it's a request to have it. I say, there's some areas of town that have had narrow streets from day one, just kind of people through, uh, common sense, don't park where they would be able to prohibit that, but, uh, uh, sometimes.
Common sense?
I would ima, I would imagine this, uh, road is used more frequently than others to get to Lakeside Park or Lakeside School. True.
Cameron, can you, real quick, just talk about the process? I mean, you're not just sitting at home thinking, "Hey, this one's gonna be parking on one side." I mean, what, what'd you go through to determine that?
Uh, when a request is brought in for no parking, it, uh, is brought to staff. Uh, we meet, uh, it's the, uh, police department, fire department, streets, uh, traffic, and myself, as well as bringing in USD two fifty, uh, to get there and put in, because, uh, oftentimes when we get, uh, condition reports from them as well, or if we make any sort of change, that it would, uh, potentially impact the bus traffic that way as well. Uh, so we'll come in, uh, we'll put it on agenda. Uh, each of the folks will go out and take a look, investigate it themselves. They say in a condition like this, we go through there and we check to see if, how many of the properties have access to off-street parking. If you're in an area of town that's got zero driveways, that becomes a bigger issue trying to restrict, uh, parking as opposed to an area that might have wider lots, or also everyone there have a driveway as well. Uh, we also, I say, take a look at, uh, you know, line of sight issues, you know, width of the street, those type of things. Twenty-four foot wide, you have to be, uh, pretty courteous in parking on each side for anyone to be able to get in between there. Uh, but if you're on a wider street, you know, twenty-seven or thirty-one foot wide, those obviously have, uh, there are different impacts to it as well. And then, uh, once the, uh, uh, group, uh, has a recommendation, if there's a recommendation to go ahead and restrict the parking, we bring that to you for ordinances.
How do you, uh, how do you decide what side of the street will be no parking?
Uh, most time you have to go back through, again, it, uh, can be street by street, uh, uh, you know, number of driveways on one side or the other, you know. I know we've, uh, looked at some where you've got, uh, you know, parking where you almost leapfrog, where you almost have to, uh, if you picked one side, you're not gonna have but maybe three parking spots to the entire block that way. And so that's just one of the many considerations in there.
Okay, so it's great, so we're taking care of a complaint. Do I have any other questions or concerns?
I make a motion to approve.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Ordinance number G thirteen oh three. Consider adopting ordinance number G thirteen oh three, amending section two dash forty of the Pittsburgh City Code to provide that pursuant to KSA twenty-five dash three-one-three, the City Commission of Pittsburgh, Kansas shall, shall establish by resolution the date upon which the regular term of our office for all city officers shall commence, and revoking all other provisions of Pittsburgh City Code, section two dash forty.
Commissioners, yeah, Henry's gonna handle this. The election year was moved by the state legislature. When they did that, they set up the, as part of the language, an attempt to tell people when, um, they could take office. Hence, two years later, we're at the point where we can make that decision on our own. Henry's drafted the appropriate ordinance, and I'll let him walk you through it.
Yeah, we, we get to set this by resolution now. It, it essentially, uh, helps with the lame duck status that had been created by the change, uh, in the laws governing, uh, terms of city commissioners. Um, so, once the, uh, election has been certified, um, the new commissioners will take, uh, their term, or, uh, uh, commissioners who've been re-elected will, uh, commence their new term. You know, essentially, right after, uh, the election, uh, as quickly as we can, instead of waiting until the second Monday in, in January. It's just something we need to do to, to, uh, take advantage of that legislation.
Any questions or concerns?
I think that's a very good idea, that we do this, so.
Looking for a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
My second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Resolution number twelve twenty-eight. Consider adopting resolution number twelve twenty-eight, establishing the date upon which the regular term of office for city officers shall commence.
And once again, this is just the resolution that would, uh, would allow, uh, those terms to, to commence.
Any questions or concerns?
So what was that date again?
Be on or after December first, following the certification election result.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution passes. Professional services contract, Ben Moore Studios LLC. Consider staff recommendation to enter into a professional service contract with Ben Moore Studio LLC for a survey of downtown Pittsburgh, including the evaluation of architectural and historical resources, and the determination of which properties and/or collection of properties might merit preservation.
This is one of those rare cases where we're bringing you a contract for a consultant that isn't gonna cost us anything. Well, it's gonna cost us some of Britain's time, but, uh, we got a grant from the State, uh, Store Preservation Office. What, and by say, by we, I mean, Britain admitted it, received it. Um, but, uh, this is, we're going to, uh, have this, uh, this consultant program with a great deal of experience in this. We went through an RFP process to select them. They're going to look at a hundred, uh, about a hundred buildings downtown that are Broadway-facing, and do historical research on all of them, right? It, it should be, it's a really great start to, to, to kind of get a, a handle on, 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 on what's, what happened, what's happened in our community for many years, with some colorful history in some of these buildings, and we're, we're really interested and excited about seeing what, what's happening. It's a first step toward, uh, some more historic preservation. It's harder to get rid of a, to let a building go if you know the, the history it has and the personality it's had over the years, so.
Where's this grant come from?
It comes from the National Park Service, and it's administered through the State Historic Preservation Office.
And there, Ben Moore Studios is from?
They're out of Manhattan, um, they work, they do the architectural side of things, and they actually work as a team with a organization called Davis Preservation. Um, Christie Davis actually used to be the director of the State Historic Preservation Office, um, so she's very aware of these grants, understand what they entail and what's expected of them, so. I think it's also really important to note that the Downtown Advisory Board is the driving force behind this. Um, without them, this would not be possible, so it's another example of community boards doing really important work for us, and two of them are here today.
So, we, my question about this was the, the city's labor cost, um, to compile all this, so that, Britain, that's just you?
It's, uh.
Yes.
Yes, or, no, no.
I would see the contract.
Yeah, but I mean, you're, you're, you will be the one doing this, so this will be your labor and your job.
And there's other in-kind contributions. Anytime we use Block twenty-two, we aren't charged for that, I put that down as in-kind. Um, it's a twenty percent match. Actually, we haven't even started the project, and we're over halfway there, so I'm not too worried about it.
I noticed from the conference that we just attended, this, several weeks ago, that the, uh, mayor's talking about reestablish, or, mayor, the governor's estab, uh, talking about establishing, uh, what the hell is it? I just was thinking of it.
Downtown.
Downtown.
Oh, Main Street.
Main Street.
Main Street organization that we used to have. So that will tie in, I would imagine, with all of that, too. So have you talked to all the businesses of downtown about this, uh?
We've talked to a lot of them, um, not all of them. Um, it's not an invasive.
Um it's not an invasive process. They don't go into the building at all. Um it's really historical research and then visually looking at the architecture. If a property owner would want to let them in, they're welcome to when they're doing that fieldwork. Um we're having our kickoff meeting, should the contract be approved, next Tuesday. Uh we've invited all of the downtown business owners and property owners to come to that in the, I don't want to say affected area, project area, um to be a part of that and meet them and see their faces and understand the people, why they're there and kind of know why this person might be lurking around your building.
They'll be lurking.
Exciting project.
Yep, terrific.
I move to approve the contract with Ben Moore Studio.
I second. Been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Non-agenda reports and requests.
What do you guys think? Should we be able to ride motorized vehicles, non-medical motorized vehicles on sidewalks in the city?
What was the question?
Do you, should we continue to allow non-medical motorized vehicles to be ridden on sidewalks in the entirety of the city?
Uh I would, my opinion, no.
I agree.
My opinion, I think as long as it's not a downtown street that's congested, I don't see any issue with it.
But how how wide is a sidewalk?
Depends.
Four feet, four feet, is that what it is?
Forty eight feet, forty eight inches.
I mean, some of them, if if you're walking um south on Broadway, there's those brick ones in front of, you know, they're not.
Pretty narrow.
Yeah.
Face it, some of them, you couldn't ride your uh the bike down uh because of the condition.
Uh well, I, two of us at least.
I would, I would support that as well.
Could we see something at the next meeting, uh what that would look like in ordinance or a change to that? What?
Yes.
Worth a discussion.
Worth a discussion, yeah. Thank you.
Any other non-agenda?
I I would like to go back to the electricity thing. Because I I know what the s- the negative spin will be on the fact that no one's seconded Chuck's um motion and that will be that the rest of us, you know, are either trying to hide something or don't care. Um but I I want to be very clear, looking at electricity is a city-driven project. It's not a Westar project, it's our project. And we were walking down the path of good faith with Westar and then they did their survey and they did their letter and they released their feasibility study and they're trying to drive the narrative. I think Jay's been very clear where we are in data collection. We need some key, we need some key data before we would even have the knowledge to make a decision. I'm not interested in Westar coming without me knowing our information. I'm not interested in them telling us what their data is when we don't have our data. We need a meaningful, robust conversation and it's not going to happen on November twelfth. We need.
I understand that, when nobody seconded the motion, but I I do, I would like to hear from all sides that's involved. Uh Westar has every right, or Evergy now, has every right to tell their side of the story.
But we don't know our, but Chuck, we don't know our side.
I know, I know.
So we.
There's a lot of information we need.
Right, and I don't think we'll have it by the twelfth and for us to invite them and just, it will be a one-way conversation because we will not have the data to engage in a meaningful conversation. I'm not opposed to that happening, but I would like a whole bunch more information from our team and we know that they're working on it. So by not seconding your motion or not inviting them, I'm not in any way, shape or form saying that I don't want Evergy to come, I don't want to hear their information, but the dialogue needs to be a dialogue and not one way and then.
Dawn, I've never suggested to anybody.
I'm just, I'm just giving my opinion. I'm not, I'm not arguing with you.
I'm not planning to argue with you.
I'm just saying.
If it wasn't seconded, that people would not look at you in a good light. I'm just thinking that Westar would like to have a voice at the table. They've requested it uh early on. Uh evidently, the city will decide when that is. Now, we're speaking of that, I just, I have another question. I know uh they put out their uh survey, whatever it was, their assessment.
Their, uh huh.
Some of us have that. I know they sent that to all of us on our city website. I mean, our city email address.
I mean, it's it's accessible.
And I didn't receive it. They sent it to me again and I didn't receive it. So they called me for the third time and asked if the other commissioners had received this. I have no knowledge. But I get them, gave them a second email site and I received it that time. So I I I I'm not saying anything about that other than.
Has anyone received an email from Evergy?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Is there any way uh that that's being censored, uh going on a uh city? Darren, I I'm asking a question.
No.
All right.
We do not censor emails to commissioners.
That is not being censored. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Did I hear that nobody else had received that email?
I don't even know what you're talking about.
Well, some of us have that copy.
I'm going to say something about Evergy coming and speaking to us.
Sure.
You know exactly what they're going to say.
Yeah.
They're gonna, they're they're the best, they're this, they're that. That's that's their sales pitch. Okay, I got it. We know what they're going to be saying and they're going to tell us how, what a horrible job we're going to be able to do. I don't think it's time for them to come here and say that. They've already done their PR bit by sending their survey, by sending their letters and by doing and the the newspapers should be really happy with this because they're in the newspaper every day practically with a a a big ad. They're they're getting their word out there. They're not sitting in the back of the bus being quiet.
Well, I have no crystal ball, so I don't know what they're going to say at a commission meeting. All I do, Dawn.
You don't know what they're going to say?
No, I don't. What, excuse me?
Baloney.
They're going to try to put their side, just like any other business would be out there.
But we don't have a.
I understand that.
We don't have the data.
So don't tell me baloney, I don't know what they're going to talk about. That's really unprofessional.
Well, you know exactly what they're going to talk about.
That's a little bit unprofessional.
That's, too bad.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, there will come a time when there will be a shared.
I will look forward to hearing from them when we decide they could speak.
Yeah, in due time, I would be, I would support them coming um after we've gained more facts and when we have more of a direction as to where we're going. I would, I would support them to come here to the commission.
Anything else?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, I want to finish that conversation. The uh, we are in negotiation with them. So um I I know as the lead staff, it's been insinuated that we're, you know, we'll let them know when they can come to they can come under public input and say whatever they want for three to five minutes or as long as the mayor desires. Um our our opinion was in a negotiation, we don't really have, somebody we're negotiating with come before the commission to make their case. Um but to that end, to wrap up the conversation, I think last time we were in here, we talked about um that we had information out, uh we had requests to them for information and we were hoping um that they would respond to keep this going. Um we have received their response. It looked like we we met with our team today. It looked like it was in very good faith, so we are continuing um the sharing of information. And, you know, I hope people um can appreciate the work the city's doing and a lot of it is out of respect for the information that they are also sharing because their information is i- i- can change from time to time. So um I would never want anybody to think that they're not allowed under public input and I would appreciate that when there is a time to come, um definitely, we will ask them to come in. We would like to have our team here as well, so it's a useful conversation to avoid maybe what some people are considering, which is just more pandering by one side or the other. But uh today was uh, you know, it was a good day. We had a great meeting. We we really appreciated what they sent over and it's going to allow us to continue this dialogue and and we're going to get back to you and keep you updated a- as fast as we can on what we have. So I just wanted to add that since.
Thank you.
It sounds like they weren't, um it it was kind of up in the air last meeting, um really where we were with the the company and they seem to be working with us, so thanks to them.
Thank you. Anything else? Seeing nothing else, looking for a motion to adjourn? I'm, I I I make the motion. Do I get a second? Been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?